And remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask you to look at the homeless and the sick and to get them back in society as quickly as possible. We also ask you to look at our first responders, our police, our EMTs, from the standpoint as they protect us on a 24/7. Also, those that are in the armed forces from the standpoint, especially in our particular area, as they're watching over us, watch over them as well. And what we do tonight, we do for the good entire city and not for anyone's particular project or interests. And we do all of this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I have to my left Belinda Nitschke, be taking the minutes tonight, our city clerk. If you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Barlage?
Here.
Mr. Messmer?
Here.
Mr. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mrs. Spears?
Here.
Dr. Swilly?
Mr. Thielen?
We do have a quorum this evening, and I'd like to welcome the council members as well. We always have first on our agenda from standpoint citizens wishing to be heard, but it's not on the agenda tonight. And I don't know in the crowd here is if there's anyone else that would like to speak on the matter, please come forward and address, please. This is your time.
I typed everything out for efficiency. Can I be heard? Okay. My name is Bridget Barone, and I've been a homeowner here in Edgewood for seven and a half years. I thank you for the opportunity to share my concern regarding the dangerous intersection of Larkspur Court and White Oak Drive in my neighborhood of Whispering Woods. When traveling south and uphill on Larkspur, cars parked on the right side of the street cause a blockage, forcing drivers into the opposite lane. At the same time, drivers turning right onto Larkspur from White Oak descend downhill, often without even looking to their right. They proceed into the same lane as the uphill drivers. This result in both traffic of, excuse me, this results in both directions of traffic converging into the same lane, creating frequent near misses. And often, drivers do not even stop at the White Oak stop sign. I've expressed this concern on more than one occasion through the Edgewood Engage app with documentation dated back to as early as January of 2020. I've also called the city office directly voicing this concern. Most recently, I captured dash footage of a near collision when a pickup truck failed to stop altogether. I can further elaborate on any of these details if requested. We cannot eliminate distracted nor impatient driving in this community. I respectfully asked the council to consider a solution to make this intersection safer. One possibility would be to prohibit parking on the right side of Larkspur where the uphill traffic is forced into the opposing lane. This would ensure safe and clear passage. Of course, I trust council to determine the most effective solution.
Bridget? Thank you very much. I guess... Brian, do you want to...
I mean, if council would like, we can put it on the agenda under one of the items to discuss. I spoke to Chief Krynis about it today. He confirms that we do have parking issues there periodically where people are parking too close to the intersection. That's a very easily remedy because in the ordinances, it already states a distance from the intersection in which people are allowed to park and not allowed to park. So, we could post signs to stop that part of it. The uphill stop sign, we've discussed that several times over the last 10 years. And my understanding was it was always never placed there because it is an uphill run. So, during inclement weather, that makes it difficult for vehicles to get up the hill and make the turn if they have to stop at the stop sign. Other than that, council has prerogative to ask that a stop sign be placed or parking or any of those items to do. So...
I like the idea of the parking. What, I did drive up it today, and this, I don't think the stop sign's going to work there because it's like a peak and you're going to stop people going both directions. But the no parking, there was nobody there when I came by today, so I didn't realize that that, that problem.
Yeah, I just believe, and Chief Krynis, if you want to comment on that, you're welcome to comment.
Hi. Well, I don't believe we've had any recent complaints about parking in that particular area that I am aware of. I know in the past, we have had some concerns about parking too close to that intersection and it potentially creating hazards. So, I do believe some signage would probably be beneficial, and we can also step up our enforcement on the stop sign itself in that area and for reckless driving as well with our patrol.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe that the stop signs indicate that the oncoming tra, that traffic, does it indicate that they do not stop? I don't remember looking at it. Mr. Rule, do you know?
It does not.
Okay. So, we could put those on the stop sign post as well. I'm guilty of what you've said. I've stopped coming up the hill thinking I'm supposed to, and then I've turned when people are coming up at time because you're not ready for that if you're not familiar with the intersection. So, immediately, we could put on the stop signs that are there to be aware that that traffic is not going to stop. And then, we could make sure that all the no parking from sign to corner are posted so people can't park on that and they can make the turn before they go outside.
That would be greatly appreciated. It seems like depending on the time of day, there's an influx of excessive cars in that area. And a lot of the drivers that are turning right onto Larkspur from White Oak naturally look to their left but not to the right. And then, that's where the near misses happen on frequent occasions. So, I appreciate your consideration of our solutions.
Jimmy, are you looking at it on a map?
I, I've got relatives that live on Larkspur, and they've voiced similar concerns. And on Google Maps, there are people parked there, on Larkspur at the end of where White Oak junctions to...
Is there a driveway close to it on the intersection? I can't...
It doesn't appear so. I don't remember there being...
I think the distance from the intersection is, is it 20 feet?
Do we accomplish that by just a motion, or how do we accomplish?
Oh, no. We'll put the signs up immediately for the no parking. We have, we can have Rick's crew go out and post signs just so we can get them off of the, all the corners. There's no parking in the intersection whatsoever, so we don't have to worry about that side. And then, we can put the signs up saying to, that that traffic is not going to stop. If you would like a stop sign put up, I have the ability to put a stop sign up, but I'll always ask council to at least make a motion so we're all in support of any stop signs being put in the community to do that. So...
I don't think it's necessary. I think if we take these steps, it might solve the problem. Might have to extend the no parking, but I think we could start in this direction and see how it goes.
I drive that way about three mornings a week, and I believe that there's a house there that has more than three cars, maybe five cars, that do not fit in their two-car driveway. And they park along the street, and I think that seems to be what, you know, causes that buildup because they cannot park in their driveway or in their garage or completely on a driveway.
How about that as a start?
I appreciate it greatly. I do. Thank you.
We'll, we'll look at it entirely, Bridget. Thank you very much for your concern as well. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has, not on the agenda? We have the agenda in front of council this evening. Are there any adjustments you want to make or additions to the agenda? Okay. If not, then I'll entertain you looking at August the 18th, 2020 minutes. Action on that at first and a second, and any corrections.
I'll make a motion, approve in minutes.
No second. Jeff Schreiber and Joe, call the roll, please.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barlage?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
The approval of the August 18th minutes, stand, let's present. I'm going to go out of kilt here from standpoint. We've got a Z-21 on zoning from the standpoint, but these individuals are not interested in zoning. They're, we're, we're interested in getting a new officer and welcoming the old officers and all the family here tonight as well. So, let me start off with, I guess, is Austin Ford going to, am I going to swear him in first?
Mayor, if it'd be okay, if I could make a brief introduction?
Oh, yeah, please do. I, I'm okay.
And then, we can go through...
That would, that would be great.
And provide badges and do the swearing in afterward. That would be great. So, members of council, mayor, thank you for your valuable time this evening. I appreciate it. As you guys may be aware, we have quite a few new faces at the police department, and we've recently gone through a promotional process. So, I thought it would be an appropriate time to introduce the new members of our police department to the council and our members of the police department to the council as well. So, I have the opportunity to, you know, introduce some outstanding officers that we have recently hired. But before I do that, I would like to take a moment and recognize Sergeant Jared Buchanan. Sergeant Jared Buchanan and his efforts ensure that we hire the highest quality candidates for our open position. He works extremely hard to make sure that those new members of the police department feel like valuable members of the team the second they have an interaction with our department. And during the last two hiring processes, he has shouldered a great deal of the responsibility, and I just wanted to commend him for his efforts in these processes. So, I'm going to begin to talk about our new officers. If you wouldn't mind standing up when I mention your name, please, so that everyone knows who you are. First, the introduction I would like to do is Officer Sardarius Barnes, if you wouldn't mind standing. Thank you. So, Sardarius is a 26-year-old Georgia native. He's a veteran police officer with five-plus years' experience serving in the Irondale and Birmingham Police Departments in Alabama. He has two young sons, ages three and six. He has multiple certifications, including firearms instructor. He's an FBI-certified hostage negotiator. He's previously served on the SWAT team as an operator, and he's also a field training officer. Sardarius is a huge UK basketball fan, and his hobbies include competitive shooting. He enjoys training himself and also teaching and instructing others in firearm shooting and proper technique and safety. Sardarius, welcome. The second introduction I would like to make is our newest recruit officer, Austin Ford. Austin, if you, thank you. Officer Ford's 25 years old. He's a northern Kentucky native. He more specifically was, was born here at St. Elizabeth, Edgewood, grew up in Fort Wright, and graduated from Dixie Heights High School. He has previously been employed with the University of Cincinnati Health, Police, and Public Safety. He also has experience with the animal control offices in Boone County and Hamilton County, Ohio. And he, you know, knew his career path, was a police officer as early as senior in high school. And I believe he served as a public safety cadet for the Independence Police Department. Austin also enjoys sports, specifically, he's a Cardinals fan and a Bengals fan. So, and he is currently slated to go to the Police Academy in December of this year. So, welcome. The third introduction I'd like to make is our new Turkeyfoot Middle School, School Resource Officer, Sam Goodman. SRO Goodman is a retired veteran police officer who retired from Lakeside Park, Crestview Hills Police Department with a total of over 24, 23 years in law enforcement experience. Sam has also served in the National Guard for 20 years. He's married with three children, and he likes to travel and hike with his family. His favorite vacation was when they toured five national parks in just one summer. Sam wanted to continue his career as a police officer and continue an impactful life of service as a school resource officer at Turkeyfoot Middle School, and we're happy to have him. Welcome. And finally, I would like to introduce to council our newest supervisor, Sergeant Brian Maitel. Sergeant Maitel has more than 20 years of law enforcement experience, having served with cities of Paris, Fort Wright, and Elsmere, where he retired as a sergeant. He's a graduate of DOC JT's Academy of Police Supervision and has also completed the Criminal Justice Executive Development courses. In addition to previous leadership roles, Sergeant Maitel also served as a hostage negotiator with the SWAT team previously. He's been married for 25 years, has two adult children, and enjoys traveling with his wife and working around the farm with his horses. If we could now maybe take some pictures and with myself and the mayor and family members, if we can do that quickly. Sir, Sardarius, if you could jump off with the chief and the mayor first, and then I'll ask if you don't mind because we're, none of us are made on our own. Our families got us here, so then I'll ask if your family will come up and take a photo. Any photos that go on social media, I'm not going to put anyone's family on social media, so don't be worried about that. Only photos on social media will be the officer or the supervisor with the chief and with the mayor. If I could give you three first and the senator here?
Are your off days Friday? Are your off days Friday? I have Purdue, UK tickets, but exhibition game for you.
You're going to take it school from Alabama.
Hey, mayor, his, his mom told him he had to buy a real coat.
Now, I'll ask if the family will come up. If you wanted one of the group photo, and then I'll text you those photos.
Blading.
Perfect. One more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll bring Austin up now?
Yes. Austin, welcome aboard. Congratulations and good luck with the academy. Give raise your right hand, pronounce your name. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth and to be faithful, sincere, and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your own ability the office of police officer of the city of Edgewood according to law. And then, I do further solemn swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon within the state of North Carolina, nor have I accepted a challenge to fight a duel with a deadly weapon, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending to help the county. I firmly solemnly swear that I will endeavor to the best of my ability to detect and prosecute all handbooks and others violating the law against gambling. Congratulations.
One more?
Thank you. We did swear at Sam, so Sam's already taken care of. Thank you very much. You've got to sign this. But again, all the, all the relatives here, thank you very much for coming and supporting me along, probably all of us from the standpoint. As we know, the critical times that are going on today within the world from the standpoint of the law, want everybody to be safe and we want everybody to be protected as well. Again, thank you very much for extending your arms, your body, and from the standpoint of giving yourself to...
Introduce the rest.
Thank you very much for all that you do. Oh, yes.
Yeah, we got Maitel and one other to go. And then, one more, too, right? Our school resource officer.
Yes.
Okay, good. You have a bunch of pictures today.
You look, you look great. You look... And congratulations. Sam, congratulations.
And then, one more of Sergeant Maitel, if that would be okay.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And then, I promise we'll let the meeting...
No, the way you can leave the meeting, we're going to talk about zoning at the same time. Welcome aboard. It's a pleasure. Retired, you'll do well with those kids.
Family. Is the one, is, is your one here that they made you do all the floor work and everything? All the flooring and everything? She here?
Yes, right here.
You're killing him.
That's good.
Wonderful. Glad you all came for the support. We need the support. We appreciate it.
Jimmy, would you, while he's, while the mayor's coming back up to sit down, would you let all the rest of the department stand up and maybe just quickly introduce each one of them?
Sure.
Police Department, stand up.
Far left is Sergeant Jared Buchanan, who I've already spoken about a little bit. Next is Joe Wyler, one of our third shift patrol officers currently. Sergeant Mike Winkler is in the back. Clayton Dunleavy, he was here last year. And then, way in the back is Jeff Hackador, one of our patrol officers. So, thank you guys for coming and showing your support.
Well, it's a pleasure. Thank you very much.
So, at this time, I ask the family of the police here, the officers that want to come back to the police side, just for refreshments. We're going to have a little party, but we're not doing any drinking or anything.
I assume it was just cokes and...
Yes, sir. Or a little too wild. Thank you, everybody, for your support. Really appreciate it. Again, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to go through all of that. We feel like it makes them feel like very valuable members of the team, and we want you to know who our officers are, and we want our officers to know who you guys are. And, you know, we hope they all serve the community eventually for a long time moving forward. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chief, we value it as well. Thank you.
Now, we get to the exciting stuff.
Let me introduce you from, she's from PDS. Megan, welcome aboard.
I know this is just the zoning part, but, no, it was great. That was wonderful. Um, yes, let me get this back pulled up for you guys.
Chief, you don't have to stay.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
I'm sure this is working.
Yeah, you can go down.
I'll, we'll just fill in for you. Jimmy, thanks.
Let me log out of this and log back in and see if it works for you.
You're now Sergeant Armed.
Yes. We always, we always have somebody at Sergeant Arms. Tom, you just...
I don't. I can't, we can't get that to move either.
Really?
Yeah.
It's not on the laptop.
Is it on the screen, though? Can you move the...
I minimized this.
We had this last time.
No, it's not even here.
Can we go over to the fly tables over here?
You can. Oh, well, that's how that works.
Round of applause. That's why we have you in that seat.
Yeah. Let's try that. Wait, start it again. Hang on.
Oh, I did not do that.
No, you didn't. It's every time you, you sign out of it, it, it does that. There we go. Okay. So, I am happy to be here again before you. This is to talk about the new Z-21 ordinance. I've clarified some questions that came up in the first council meeting and then added in some new things. Nothing drastic or anything, just basically keeping up with KRS. So, I will go through the slides that you've already seen fairly quickly. If there is a blue star in the left-hand corner, that means there's something new on it, and I will alert you to that. So, the agenda is the same as last time. It's the Z-21 process. The goals, what is new, again, that's highlighted. Zone changes, other articles, what is staying, and then, of course, the next steps from here. Again, thank you to our working group. You all know that we worked long hours to get this completed. The process, we've already been through it, but basically, in a nutshell, the project began in 2016, and we are now at the last phase, which is the implementation of the code. The goals, it's easy. It's to make the code more user-friendly and also to modernize it where needed and make it more efficient. So, what's new? Last time, we talked briefly about the zones, but I've updated the zoning map for that. Use table, we'll go through a couple new uses. Dimensional requirements, development standards, natural resources and environmental standards, parking and loading, congestion mitigation corridors, process and procedure, and definitions. You've seen this before. This has not changed. There's 18 zones reduced to 12 zones, most of which were the commercial districts dropping down to three. For the most part, you'll see that the maps look the same from the existing zoning side on the left to the proposed draft zoning on the right-hand side. The changes that I made on this map include the institutional areas, which are the purple areas, to include that section of President's Park and then Victory Park, I think is what it's called. So, residential large lot, nothing's changed. This is your, your low-density, single-family residences. This took the place of your R1B. Minimum lot area of a half acre. This one did change because I updated the maximum density to 3.5. It was a straight carryover. So, that got updated, but otherwise, none of the zones have changed since the last time you saw them. And they take the place of R1C, R1D, your R1DDs. And again, it's 3.5 maximum dwelling units per net acre. RCPS, haven't made any changes. Single-family on smaller lots, and this takes the place of R1E, R1F, and their 6,000-square-foot lot sizes, and there's two areas highlighted. Neighborhood commercial is what I presented last time as well. This replaces your current neighborhood commercial zone. The dimensions, dimensional standards were revised to match the existing conditions, and there's three areas. Community commercial is replacing your current community commercial and shopping center and neighborhood shopping center zones. The dimensional standards were revised to match the existing conditions, and there's one area. Highway commercial replaces your current highway commercial zone. Again, the dimensional standards were revised to match. Your business park is taking the place of your PO zone. Your dimensional standards, again, will revise to match, and there are four areas. Your flex industrial is replacing the current IP zone. Dimensional standards, again, are matching. Mixed use zone. So, this one is the new zone. It's replacing a current section of R1C, the zone along horse branch. The MU district provides a diverse mixture of high-activity uses within walkable and connected districts. And these uses include, it's a long list, but I think it's good to know them, multi-family, single-family, attached and detached, upper-floor housing, three- and four-family residential. As for the commercial, it's animal care enclosed, bar brewery conversions, childcare type one, dry cleaner, farmer's market, financial services, liquor store, medical office, office, personal services, restaurants, retail, and studio for work.
Megan, before you move on from that zone, what other options for zone could that be?
Right now, it's R1C. So, it could be... Right now, it's R-1C, so it could be residential.
What other option would there be? I think Brian was saying, I can't remember what you were calling it.
Oh, I think plan development.
Oh, PUD. It could be a planned unit development as well.
And could you explain what that is?
Sure. Sure. The mixed-use district actually has, I know you can't really see it off to the side there, but it has the dimensional standards there for you, where it gives like a 5,000 overall and a 1,000 per dwelling unit lot area. Like, it gives specific setbacks where a PUD does not. A PUD would then, like, for instance, if a developer came in and said, "I want to develop X, Y, and Z," the plan would become before you, and you would be able to know the density, you would know what the development is, and that plan becomes binding. And then, of course, there's a final development phase to that as well. What is new with this mixed-use zone that we added in since, we tweaked it since the last council meeting, is the process that it goes through. It would go through something similar. It would be the concept development plan and a final plan. So, the city would see that plan as well.
What is it, what is it now currently?
It's R-1C.
Meaning?
It's your...
Residential, single-family.
Correct.
Single-family, no attached units?
Yes.
I don't know if there's attached on it now or not, but it is single-family.
Single-family.
Yeah.
So, this is, this proposal is to change this area that is now a single-family to mixed-use, like apartment building-type places?
It could be.
And, and bars and...
It could be.
So, you could have, like, on the first floor, bars, and then you could have multiple layers, levels above that are apartment complexes, that sort of thing?
And is this right down where on Horse Branch? From what point to what point?
Yeah, on the right, when you go down.
Right. Starting when, as you're going down?
Yeah, the creek's right there. If the creek's in it.
It pretty much runs, it's past where, I believe it starts just past, where's that? Nature Walking?
Where Rhine Valley is, goes up to the right. Is it before Rhine Valley or after Rhine Valley?
It starts about where Rhine Valley is, and goes all the way to the bottom of the hill. It just gets steeper at the bottom. In the front, on the top end, it's real narrow. The property's real narrow. And then, as you go down, it gets wider. But it's almost all across the creek.
Was there a request to add this kind of zoning?
We've had multiple requests over time.
From those property owners on, on, on Horse Branch?
Yeah, they've tried to sell these properties multiple times, and we have denied them anything other than residential on that.
Well...
Okay.
I think that would really be clogging up Horse Branch, and I, I, it sounds like we're downgrading ourselves by going from R-1C to mixed-use.
I would agree. That, and that's not a walkable area. You can't put sidewalks here if you wanted to. It's not, you can't walk that. I, I've run it before, and it's dangerous as hell. It's...
If it does residential, they will be required by the statute to, or by the ordinance that put sidewalks in.
If it's residential, if it's R-1C?
If it's residential, any residential development in Edgewood currently under the current zone requires sidewalks being put in, in front of it.
I'm just trying to picture a mix of bars, other little shops or whatever else.
Yeah.
Going down there, it just doesn't seem like that would be a good use of that area.
I think partly was office space for, like, doctors' offices with residential built in it or something like that built to it, so...
There's a lot of empty doctors' offices up on Thomas More Parkway.
That, I'm not a fan of, of multi-families so close to other properties that are larger properties. It just, it doesn't seem like a good fit to me.
Well, this is the time to change it.
Yep. I, I like the, how the code is changing. I don't like how this zoning is being changed from R-1 to... I mean, we could just leave it residential, and if somebody comes with a proposal, they... That's, that's why I was asking about the properties. If someone's specifically asking for their property to be changed to rezoned, that would make sense to me. Then, that's a case-by-case basis, but to do this swath, I think we're inviting apartment complexes into the city, and I'm not a big fan of that.
John, you're looking at me, I don't, you, you make it what it is. I've, I've told people who have come to us for developments on those sites, saying, "Council's stance is they do not like apartments or multi-family at this current time." So, when we went through the process, it, there was, through that working group, it was decided that that property will never be developed if it's residential, just because of the amount of work it would have to be to cross the creek. And we've had multiple requests for if council would be open to other development to it, meaning even multi-apartment across on Rhine up there where those apartments are, to match that on the other side, to be able to get the cost back out of the development you would have to do to get across that creek. That's the reason it changed. That's not support, I'm not supporting that, Kimmy. I'm just giving you the feedback to it.
I'm curious, could pod shops go there?
I don't know under mixed-use, if pod shops can go into there.
I don't think that, that would be allowed in that zone.
There, there's also uses that are permitted into the mixed-use as well, not just whatever, whatever you keep naming is not. There are uses that are in the zone that would be liable for it. So, typically, you would get, like, I said, smaller, like, office places into it and that kind of stuff.
I am looking at your recommended land use map, and that area is recommended to be mixed-use.
Correct.
And that was by...
City Council updating its recommended, the land use map. Last time we did it, would have, would have been within five years.
Was it five years? I'm not sure on the timeframe of it.
We did it when I was here, so I thought maybe it was within the last five or six years that we updated it. And it was updated to, under the land use, to be recommended as mixed-use.
If, if a single property owner comes and says, "Hey, I want to be rezoned, and here's the project," I think that's how we, as city council, lead in this endeavor, as opposed to just opening it up and then letting whatever happens happen. I, I prefer that it stays the equivalent of R-1 in the new zoning code.
R-1C.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'll, I'm fine with that, too.
All right. Just keep it, just keep it the way that it, keep it the zone that it currently is.
I can do that.
With the changes that we made to the, to the other residential zone, and then it puts it...
That works. So, what you see in that brown color there will now become the yellow, so it'll just be one continuous yellow. You're welcome. Absolutely.
Can I ask a zone? I think I know the question is, if, it has to be a certain size lot before you can do a zone change on it? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and I can't remember if we kept your current zone sizes the same.
I'm only asking because if there is a property in there, it would... So, Jamie, just to let you know, like, one couldn't ask, I believe, maybe at the bottom of the hill, there's like a 23-acre you could do, but I don't think you can do it for under a five-acre lot. So, if any of those are under fives, they just would not be allowed, just to let, not to change your mind, but just to let...
The majority of them are right around seven acres? Yeah, if there's a 24-and-a-half-acre lot, okay.
If it is the five that I'm thinking, then they could ask independently, but...
Yep.
Thank you, Brian. That's a good point to just be aware of.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you knew that before, for that size, as you go down through there.
Yeah, there's eight, seven, seven and a half.
Yeah, the bottom one is 20?
24.9 acres, yeah.
And it's currently for sale, I believe.
It has been for some time, I think.
It's...
Yeah.
All right, so, mixed-use, I will change that to...
Interesting stat of that property, by the way. It is the only property in Edgewood that actually falls in the low-income statistical area. Because of the way it's drawn, it actually falls into that area that drops into, like, the Covington and stuff, so it could be developed. I only know that because someone came and wanted to do a, a assisted living home that was going to be defined under low income. And it was the only property they found.
But you'll, is it up for grant money, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I will make that change. Conservation, you don't currently have mapped, but we left it in the code. Institutional, the only change that I made from last presentation was the addition of President's Park. There was a couple parcels that were missing, and then the park to the south there as well. Victory Park. So, and this will just highlight those changes. So, the first institutional zone is your Dixie Heights School. The next is Senior Living. The next is Kaywood Elementary, Turkeyfoot Middle, Kenton Academies. And this is where the addition of President's Park, the two parcels, were added. And then Gateway, Hinsdale Elementary, St. Pius and St. Elizabeth. And then, lastly, was just added, was the Victory Park. Planned unit development, I know you were asking about this, but again, this leaves the setbacks open to the developer. You all would see that it would have come before council. Concept development plan goes to KCPC, and then your final development plan will come to council. The intent of this is just the flexibility of it. Could be single-family, detached, attached, commercial, office, whatever that might be. It's currently not on your map, but it is in the code in case you need it. Article four, this is your use regulations and standards. We added some things in here. This is your table of permitted and conditionally permitted uses with different zoning districts. Your Ps signified permitted, and your Cs signified the conditional permit, permitted uses. The use, the existing permitted uses, I'm sorry, that was a starting point, never mind. The condensed uses, they were condensed into groups such as retail, sales, and service. So, if it was retail, it was just, it was just general retail. So, anything that had a retail component to it could go in there. This kind of, kind of sums that up nicely, so then that way, you're not sitting there going, you know, a, a convenience store and a shoe store and things like that. It sums it up into one use. Any added, or we did add some new uses such as short-term rentals. Owner occupied or only permitted in RLLS, which is your large lot size, your conventional subdivision in your compact districts. Also, fa, uh, family childcare homes are conditionally permitted in all residential and mixed-use. The mixed-use will come out, because now we won't have that. Farmers markets are allowed in commercial and institutional zones. Your accessory dwelling units are not permitted, as we discussed that last time as well. Definitions can actually be accessed from within this code. It wasn't like that before. It was very cumbersome. You'd have to jump between the pages. In this case, everything is hyperlinked, even the standards. So, everything is right there with just a click. Additionally, your accessory uses will be permitted in the side yard and rear yards not to exceed a certain square footage or percentage of the yard. And there, new for this council meeting, vape shops has been added as a use in the highway commercial zone. Definitions have been added for e-cigarettes, vape shop, and vaping products also. A change because of House Bill 160 includes your qualified manufactured homes. Right now, we're going through everyone's codes and cleaning that up. Qualified manufactured homes has been removed, and basically, that definition has been added into the single-family definition. And then, a new definition has been created for that, to kind of take it out of that and put it into the single-family area. Residential care facilities is another one. They're permitted wherever single-family is permitted, and that's per KRS. So, we changed that and made it so in that way, it was permitted in RLLS, RCBS, RCPS, and institutional. Dimensional requirements, we talked about this last time as well. It's just making it more flexible with minor dimensional requirements by allowing the zoning administrator to deviate by more than 10% of any of the standards that are given. This would be, we simplified your average front yard modifications, setbacks and lot requirements. This very well states your yard area delineation, where before it was kind of questionable. Your height measurements of buildings. With any flag lots, the front yard is no longer being taken from the stem either. Lighting standards, basically, we just modernized this. We modernized it to stop the glare in your windows, because they need to be filtered down, because the bulbs are much brighter now. So, that was modernized. Development standards, this is an option. Now, it's not, this has not been chosen in Independence, or, I'm sorry, in Edgewood, but this is, this has been added into the code in case you decide later on that you want to add it in. It would just be a simple text amendment. What this is, it has to do with transparency, your windows and things like that, and some of your building features. But some, in Z-21, some cities opted for this, most opted not to include it. Development standards, as far as your landscaping regulations, this is new. It makes compliance much easier. Multiple buffer options, acceptable substitutions, accounting for topography or larger buffers, and preserving existing trees. Your fences, committee and staff try to keep the fence regulations the same as possible as we could with the existing regulations. The article was redone, so it may look differently, but what we did is we fixed the common problem that was encountered with flag lots. You can actually put a fence in almost the exact same location as a neighboring property now. So, not only that, but the fence ordinance is so much cleaner-looking, and it's easy to follow. It's a nice table. As far as Article eight, natural resources and environment, nothing's changed here. Hillside development standards, flood protection development standards are staying the same. Parking lot and loading standards, this is the same as last time I presented as well, but we just revised these to modernize, up, modernize these as well. Basically, we kept the same or reduced the parking in many instances. Again, it's just modernizing things. Congestion mitigation corridors, this was new last presentation, and I'll just go over it again for this presentation. Traffic mitigation corridors, this will help with designate corridors, which allows coordinated access, and this is along the ones listed there. Dixie Highway, Dudley, Horse Branch, Turkeyfoot, Thomas More Parkway, and Charter Oak Road. Basically, anyone who's coming in with a development would have to present, like, a traffic study, and it would have to go through the different stages of meeting with planning, meeting with KYTC, meeting with the city, and so on. Article 11, this, again, has not changed since the last presentation. We try to keep this the same as possible. We made a slight change in the CC, your community commercial zone, and that was to change the height from 20 feet to 30 feet. And that, again, is to modernize it and to lessen your BOAs that come before you, because I think that was majority of the BOAs at the time we were working with this. Article 13, your map amendments, again, presented this last time, but what this is doing is it's in accordance with KRS 100. An applicant at the time of filing an application for a zoning map amendment may also apply for a variance and a conditional use permit at the same time. So, it expedites the process for the developer, for the applicant. Definitions, a few things have been added since last time I was here. You have the addition of vape shop, vaping product, electronic cigarette, or electronic smoking device, and that was because we added vape shops in the use table into the HC zone. And then, I just already went over your manufactured homes qualified. The House Bill 160 changed the definitions and removed the use and standards that are associated with that, dumped it into the single-family use. And that's all I have to say about that, I think. Let me make sure I didn't miss anything. No. All right, so what's staying? So, not everything is new. Largely, most is staying the same in Edgewood versus what other cities have proposed. For instance, some of the things that are staying the same are your purpose and scope, your universal regulations, sexually-oriented businesses, signs for the most part, except that one little minor tweak to the height, and then your definitions. Majority of your definitions have stayed. The definitions that I talked about were either because we added in vape shops or because we are keeping in, in, keeping consistent with KRS. The next steps, first, we were on the further refinement by the city, and now, we're on the authorized application to the Planning Commission. So, once the city council agrees that, yes, we can move forward, it would be in the form of a resolution or a municipal order to authorize the repeal and replacement of the ordinance, and then it would go before KCPC. Has a Z-21 committee, which is a smaller committee of KCPC. I would do the same presentation, pretty much, it's the same thing, for them. They would look it over, make sure there wasn't anything that they would like to recommend to, and then it would go before KCPC Planning Commission. And of course, I would present it there as well. And then, after that, it would be the final adoption through council, which is two readings, and that's it.
Just one quick question about the definitions. Sorry, maybe should have stopped you then. We decided to do that so we could control where those vape shops would go, correct?
That's correct, sure.
That's why we added it, so it's only going to be in... So it's only going to be in the highway commercial zoned areas?
So we only have one. There is some legal opinion that you, they have to be somewhere in a zone. And I'll just say, I chose the zone of down by Sparty, which is a highway commercial zone. That was the farthest I could get it away from residential and from a school.
Good foresight.
I believe Mr. Wickman might concur that he might be one of those legal minded that said, you don't have to put it anywhere, you can leave it out.
Oh, then it's a little bit more nebulous, right? And then it's...
I'll let him answer that.
The answer is it's definitely in flux. There's a number of cities that have established, they have permitted uses in various zones. They basically follow what was presented here. And you pick a zone, it's farthest away from residences, schools and churches, allow them there. That's on the principle that the vape distribution is, and retail sales is recognized in Kentucky. And once it's recognized, you can't say it's illegal.
We can ban it, but we can't control where it goes. Okay.
Yeah. Now, add this to it, in the last session of the General Assembly, there was a bill introduced to allow cities to regulate vapes. And that was not passed. The legal argument would be since the legislature refused to allow that, it's automatically prohibited. Now, whether that's a good valid argument or not, it's out there.
I appreciate the foresight in doing that. So we're not just left to whatever. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And it's the same with the sexually oriented businesses.
We don't know what, 20 years ago?
I think we put it in the industrial park or something like.
I don't know where we put it or not. And then manufactured home is a statutory requirement. So it has to be built, all standards that would be in any residential zone, you can't add, so front to back, all of those things.
You're welcome. Any other questions that can take for council?
So we will just wait now for you to get it through that process and then we'll get a letter indicating from the planning commission of what their recommendation was, in favor or not in favor, or in favor suggesting additional changes, right?
Correct. So, once it goes to planning commission, so if it's not tonight, whatever night it happens to be, the council authorizes KCPC to take a look at it, then it would trigger the implementation committee and I would go through all of that. That is a separate function than KCPC, so we could schedule that pretty much whenever. And then KCPC, the first availability would be the November date. And then from there, yes, you would receive the action letter from that and then it would come back to you for city council.
Okay. No matter what the act...
But the next step is the council has to authorize...
Correct.
So you need a motion for, from a council member tonight and a second to vote?
A resolution, a municipal order.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that...
Needs to be documented.
Documented. So we will write that and have it at the October meeting?
Okay. Perfect.
Council ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll make the change to the map, of course.
Enter into a motion.
We'll do it at a resolution. I'll write a resolution for council to pass, so it's documented in a resolution. And we'll put it on the October meeting.
Okay.
And I'll help you with the application. It's just a text amendment application, but I'll have it all filled out for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you for all your work you've done.
Thank you.
It's a handful. It's a bunch of stuff that goes in and out, in and out. But it is very important.
And Megan, thank your daughter from standpoint, she was very good.
She knows way more about zoning.
She does. Our videotapes and so forth, so. The patience that you have there, thank you very much.
I would also like to compliment you on the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
It's well done, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I can't guarantee there's not going to be text amendments or anything like that coming through, but we're going to try.
By being one of the final cities to do it, we've kind of learned from the other ones that passed it right away and then came back and said, oh, we messed up. So hopefully we picked a lot of those things up.
This is very true.
And then I know that several communities that have passed it have been so complimentary of it, being able to understand zoning now, figure things out. And when we started, I said, I've been doing this for 30 years and there's times I read our zoning code and I'm like, I'm not sure, I don't know.
Okay.
So it's very confusing at times.
Great. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll jump into the mayor's report and I'll make it real short and sweet because we've got an exciting week coming onboard. Just to familiarize everybody, the Kroger's ribbon cutting will be at 7:30 on Friday morning. So any of you and all of you that would like to come, please come, from the standpoint of the ribbon cutting. And they will open the doors at 8 o'clock for the new, for all residents and for anybody else. If you forgot some groceries that morning, you can go in there and get your eggs.
Have you been, has anybody been to the Kroger's at Silver Lake today?
It's definitely...
It's basically empty.
It's empty.
I mean, everything was 50% off in the store and people were just buying whatever they could. I mean...
They're only stocking fruits, vegetables, lunch meats and...
That's about it right now.
Yes, yes.
Bread.
Staple.
Yeah, that's what I told Elizabeth. It's like if you want some produce or at the meat counter, you get some lunch meat, that's about it.
The soft drinks and alcohol are not on sale.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
So you know, try that.
Well, it's worked out well. You know, it really, it really has.
7:30 on Friday?
7:30.
That's Friday?
Yeah, that's Friday. It will open at 8 officially. I believe the first 200, 250 people in line will get a $25 gift card and there will be other specials and stuff that goes on inside of it as well. And then I think that you should have received an email for the Thursday night event.
The Thursday night, you need an RSVP, but you do not need one for Friday morning, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Yeah. So we look forward to it. And like I said, it's been, been coming for many, many years and from the standpoint of we now have the development, we're certainly going to have a lot of issues with it, but we have fine officers from the standpoint of the fire department, public works from the standpoint, we'll certainly, we'll all be very cognizant of what's going on and...
Traffic will be interesting the first, especially about 2:45. About 2:45.
Or 2:45 in traffic, yeah. The school lets, the school lets out.
They still need to put a stop bar. I don't know if you got my message about the stop sign, but they put up a stop sign right by Wendy's, but they still need to put a painted stop bar. They've got the stop sign taped to the light post, that there wasn't one...
Before you turn on to go down to like Kenton Lands?
Yeah. There wasn't one, there was one on the gas station side, but not on the other side. And people are just running right through it.
But there's a stop sign now there, isn't there?
They taped one to the light post.
Okay.
But there's no painted stop bar on there.
I'll have to look and see if that's required or not.
Well, it was there before.
Well, I understand it was there, but if it's not required...
And if it's not there, we're going to have to have a police officer there waiting for a wreck.
I can't make them put a stop bar on a private property when it's not required.
Okay.
So we can't do that. And the chief's gone, but Mr. Roll may know because he was an officer. Can you even enforce if someone runs the stop sign on the private lot? That's a tough one, right? Because we don't have an ordinance that says there's a stop sign there that...
So you'd have to cite them with reckless driving. I've had to do that.
Yeah. So it's a weird thing on...
Actually, in Kate Marsh's old parking lot, yeah. And that's the exact spot.
Yes.
She cut across like the whole thing and almost hit a light post. But yeah, it's more, it's a different charge.
Okay.
Because it's, the stop sign is technically private.
Right.
You can kind of get away with it, but if they contest it, you're going to have to look.
Okay. I'll mention it to Jim, the store manager. They've been trying to fix everything that they can.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to make it as best they can.
I mean, it's still pouring concrete, there's still, you know, making ingress, egress.
But I did see the sign that you said it's strapped to another pole because they haven't even put a pole up to put the stop sign on yet. Because there was nothing there, people were just all going, so.
Well, and the other thing too is with Kroger coming onboard and things are coming new, we've introducing some of the new signs that we'll be having within the park and throughout the city from the standpoint of, just to kind of dress everything up. So from the standpoint, the banners will be going up. As you know, we have been putting banners up every year throughout the years, but now we've kind of retired some of the old ones and we're trying to bring in some of the new ones. The new spirit, the new look and along with the flowers and things of that nature. So look forward to seeing as many of you possibly and really residents from the standpoint, as many as possible that would like to come on Friday morning. You're more than welcome and we're glad to have you, you know, get to open the doors. With that, I'll run into staff reports, any questions on Brian's? City clerk? Fire with Tom? General services with Rick?
Mr. Deener, I did have one question about Dudley Phase 3 and 4.
Yes, sir.
The, was it the historic resources? Is Palmer our contractor, the general contractor?
Oh, no, no. So Palmer, Palmer is the company that the highway department will hire to do the historic and environmental review for us. So we're not really hiring them, but in your grant process, when you do one, the KYTC District 6 used to have a person on staff that did those reviews for you. That person's gone, so now they do it by a contractor. So Palmer was trying to fight to try to tighten that and reduce some of those for us before we started. But we don't contract with them, that's just part of the grant money.
Okay.
You get a $3 million grant, 15,000 of it goes to the District 6 to cover things like that.
And then that's why it's grown from 7 to 23, if memory serves correctly?
Because whoever's sitting at Frankfurt has some belief that if you mill off the blacktop and put it back, we might be impacting some historic structures along Dudley that was built in the 50s, which I'm not sure how they get to that, but bureaucracy is how I would define it.
Without being too snarky, the wonderful world of bureaucracy.
They get, they get a, they get a portion of that grant funding to go through. So when I asked for it to be forgiven, that we would not do it because we weren't going off of the right away. So there was no way that we would impact any historic structures, even if they found one. They denied that request. And then from what we have, about seven easements that we're going to have to get, somehow they got to 20 something properties that they felt that we would be possibly disturbing. So we would have to do a historic review of it, which I believe they'll have to go back and look at deeds, all of those type of things to find out.
And Mr. Deener, who does those, that research? Who goes?
That would be Palmer who will do that.
Palmer does that, not us. So we're waiting on someone else to do this.
So they're trying to narrow that back down to a number and then Palmer will do it. It'll go pretty quick for Palmer, but then all of that goes back to the state in Frankfurt. And they're telling me that takes three to six months to get it through that process back to us right now.
Okay. So we're asking for some more patience for our citizens because we're waiting on Frankfurt and that process, right?
Every step, I think we get there, they throw one more.
It's just, it helps to know, to be, helps me be more patient if I know why.
Yeah. It's, you know, the first part of it was, was a lot about the engineering firm that stored work for us. And we got in pretty deep where I needed them to finish the drawings and get them approved. Those now are approved. Now we're having to work through trying to get the environmental review and the historic preservation review done. And then once that is complete, I think we should get approval to move to, to bidding the project, but we have to then wait for an agreement to come out of Frankfurt that we sign. And it'll tell us like, hey, your grant's worth X amount of dollars, now you can move forward with construction and bidding the project.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, if anybody wants to bid, I'll, I'll be the first in line. It has just been, it's been bad.
Is it $3 million bid? So far, yes.
I, you know, yes, no, right? If we would not have taken the money, we would have probably just milled the road, put blacktop back, and we would not have fixed the curb line structure where you see the break off on the edges. So by doing that, when we're finished, I think the road is a good 25, 30-year asset. If we don't do that, I think every 12 to 15 years, you're back out there milling, replacing. And the road's not unsafe, it just doesn't drive very nice, right? And it doesn't look very nice. So I think if you're doing a five, $6 million project and someone's giving you $3 million, then I would say, yes, it's worth it. And I think when we're finished with it, five years from that point in time, we'll look back and think, hey, remember when we were dealing with that all the time? And I'm glad we did it, right? So it's, I don't know.
It's good to get some hope. So three to six months from now, hopefully we're starting to build...
Yeah, and Grant Center's already working on the bid documents, so the only thing that could change if they came back and said we were doing something to a historic structure or environmentally, we were disrupting something for a bat or...
Or dinosaur bones are discovered underneath Dudley.
Something like that, right? So if anyone...
They have something to write about.
If anyone knows about any, anybody who's buried along that, let us know and we'll try to get out there in the middle of the night and get them out of there and move along or something. I don't know.
Thank you.
I think the mayor's doing it because I keep saying that, hey, before I retire, I got to get this Dudley Road project done and some other, and I think he keeps calling and telling him, hey, throw something else in there and clog this up a little bit, but...
It's frustrating, it really is. But anyway, it'll get done.
It does help to know.
We are the only ones who will do that, by the way. If, if you remember four or five years ago, Erlanger announced that Stevenson Road was going to be redone. And they have some amount of millions of dollars to do that. It's still not completed and they're working through those same steps from the beginning. And every community that's getting federal funds, somewhere along the way, there was an administration that decided that, hey, you're going to go through some crazy amount. I've learned those processes now and we hope that through Congressman Massey, some of the other in Washington DC, we're talking to them about if you have a small community dealing with a small project, and so nationally, this would be a very small project, that you should be able to bypass some of those things and move toward getting it built and in place. That delay has probably cost us a million bucks because we know that the costs have gone up during COVID and inflation, right? So it's added a million dollars to this project if we're doing it, so. We get an adjustment, we'll have an inflationary, a partial inflationary adjustment to it when we get ready to the final grant. It just won't cover what I think really we're going to do. And then the requests that they have you do certain things that you don't want to do. Hope, let's get there.
Thank you.
Okay. Police, anything on the police report and then last but not least, but on the recreation? And if you are not aware, the new playground set is in President's Park in place. And now, now we're waiting for the cushioning material.
Yeah, Robbie, Rich Cruz, they're going the final grade to it this week, cleaning up some of the area around it, pressure washing before we put the rubberized surface down. But it's in and looks gorgeous. I mean, it's, I don't think we could have asked for much more for having it put in place. So hopefully, end of the week, next week, they'll show up and start putting the rubber surface down.
And that's over there by the White House. And as I said to Brian, I said, that'll be the last. We've got, we've got all the parks up to snuff and we've got a good, many, many more years before we have to do anything with, with upgrading the parks. Should be nice and strong.
A bonus that we get from that, we saved the equipment when we took out that playground that was there. We saved most of it, I don't know if we lost any, but we saved most of that. And we're going to meet onsite to see where we can put that at Victory, to see if we can put some of that into Victory to upgrade what's there. So we were able to cut some of that cost down as well when we go to Victory.
So which equipment to Victory?
The equipment that was back up on that playground site that was there. When we took that out, we were able to save that smaller piece and we are going to try to see if we can install that at Victory Park, do some grade work and get it in and mulch the area and make sure the fault edges are all correct and everything put in place.
I would have had one question for Chief Crynis, but I understand that they're, they're celebrating. I didn't want to rain on his parade. But I do want to make a note that we did lose another sergeant to go take a individual contributor position. I didn't want to rain on his parade, but I do want to make a note that we did lose another sergeant to go take a individual contributor position at a nearby agency where they're making almost $10,000 more as an individual contributor than a sergeant is here at Edgewood.
That is correct.
And so I would just like to point out that we are starting, even though we're getting some really good hires, because of salary and where our levels are, we're losing talent. And it was institutional knowledge that walks out that door because Sergeant Birch had been here and retired here. We have a day.
Yeah, great officer.
So I just want to make sure that that's on the record, that we are losing talent because of the salary levels for our sergeants and for our patrol officers. We're getting lucky because Sergeant Buchanan and Chief Cronis are doing a good job of vetting people. And we're benefiting from Alabama and other states that are, that are also bleeding kind of like Edgewood is. But I know when I came to work here, I came to work here because not only did I live here, but it was a higher pay. And Chief, at the time, Kramer could select, be selective in who he hired. That's going to go away if we continue down this road. And that's not something that we fix overnight, I understand, but I did want to make a point of that, that is on the record.
We've done a good job over the last several years to try to adjust and make those go up. I'm hoping this is a one-off kind of issue.
We're hoping it's just a one-fool thing.
That he went, but we still need to put some effort in to make sure that we stay where we are. Just like when we talked and Chief Cronis and I spoke about that, looking at other departments, putting that information together, feeding it to council because they'll want to know where we stand and how we pay. And then the other part of it, I believe Jamie is, I mean, and I'm going to say this, and it's not educated at all. It's, and the way I say it, it sucks to be a police officer right now. I mean, the way the community treats people, the police officers, what they do, how they do it. So you add that on top of maybe not paying correctly. And it's recruiting becomes a hard thing and people who have worked in it like Sergeant Birch over the years. I mean, you just get wore out. You honestly get tired and you move.
It begs the question, why would you go to a city that has a call volume that's three times what Edgewood is?
He knows it's short-lived to do that and it's whatever you can get at the end, you know? It's a great thing to add to, on the end. And Birch is, we, I say it all the time, I would take 10 of him and then give him that.
Why do you think it's a one-off?
Well, because I believe the department that's, that is doing it is really, really, really struggling hard to hire anyone whatsoever. And we've seen some outliers of what they're offering that other communities are really not going. And when you see that, you have to just kind of figure that out and what the reaction is to every city. So, you know, they, the department is willing to ask 14 officers. So it's not as if they're going to go into the market and recruit from every department and drive up the, the cost that's going in, I don't think, at the current time. Because it was a, it's a, it's a crazy amount as a patrol officer for a third shift person that's just not heard. And it's a, it's a response to if you can't hire and you can't find somebody, you've got to keep offering and offering and offering. And you instantly get, like Jamie said, one of the best. I mean, he's, he is seasoned, just a great, great officer.
Steady, good discernment, yeah.
And so I'm hoping to see that it's just kind of just that one type thing that they were trying to get people into that position. They have a high run volume. Their third shift is very, very important to have experience on their third shift. And we've been very lucky to recruit from that same department as well. We've got two or three officers. Sergeant Machel was from there. Officer Overby is from there. So we've been able to recruit from that same department. So we'll, we'll watch and see, and then we just need to start looking at data to what other departments. Because we still pretty, we, outside of that one, we're paying very well compared to other sides of communities. But as I was saying to Jamie, it's getting harder to recruit. It's getting harder. You can't find 18-year-olds coming out of high school that are saying, hey, I really want to go into law enforcement. Their parents are probably saying, no, you don't. Stay out of it. It's tough. And so until we start treating them a little bit better. And that's reality. But I mean, the hardcore dream one is an easy one. It's the ones who are on the fence that you're saying, hey, it's a great profession. It's noble. It pays well. And our retirement system isn't what it used to be. So you're looking at a, you're looking at a retirement system that's a little bit different than what it is in Cincinnati. So we're on a border state that has a retirement system that used to be what I'm in. And it's now ours has changed to a quasi 401K-type plan. Whereas you can go to a community, as we lost one of our officers to a community in Ohio, and go right back into a defined pension plan, work 20 years, you get a full pension. So when you're a border state, border community, it makes it very hard. I appreciate your concern and support to it. And you will see some stuff, I think. If not, before the year's out, which I hope not, but in the next budget cycle, I think you'll see some things to do for that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
Okay. What's next? Ordinance, Minnesota orders and resolutions. I got an ordinance tonight, which is ordinance 2025-09-06 for the fiscal year of '25, '26, the property tax rate first reading.
First of all, is there any discussion on it? You saw a memo that I put out.
Yes.
It was mentioned during the budget process, if not from one, but multiple council members that we might want to, at this point, try to hold the rate or increase it minimal. As you can see in the calculations, they're all very, very close. And when you do those hundreds of a fraction, there's not much differential to it. So we do have prepared what's called the compensating rate. That is what will generate the same revenue lack as we receive this year. Next, when we send out that billing, we'll get new construction, so it adds a little bit to it. And then we also have prepared a 2% and a 4%. So I just want the council to know that. And if there's any discussion or comment on that, we can do that now.
All right.
I would like to say, say at the compensating rate. I think.
I was gonna say, if it was silent, and I said if it was silent, the mayor would instruct to do the compensating rate. We would take that as a.
I mean, this, I tried to look at this year, the ending balance on, on our funds from last year to this year, and we've gained $400,000. I know it's going to be probably different this year, but it's all the intersection up here, but.
I think I've been proud of that over the 11 years here. We have more money in the bank than we did when I started. And we've done a crazy amount of big, large projects. The Kroger store, just to kind of give you an indication, it's 300 new jobs in Edgewood. And it's about $35 million in new construction compared to the Kmart that was on the site. It'll add about 30-some million to it. We have two areas where we have close to, what, 40 to 50 new homes that can be built in Edgewood now on lots. And if they do the outlot at the new Kroger facility, if they fill that, we should pick up another 50, 75 jobs.
With that, Mr. Wickman, if you would, read the compensating rate, please.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance, pardon me. It's an ordinance of the City of Edgewood, Kent County, Kentucky, providing for the assessment of all real estate and personal property within the corporate limits of the City of Edgewood, which is subject to taxation thereby for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026, providing for the payment collections, such taxes, penalties, and interest thereon, describing the purposes from which the taxes so collected shall be appropriated and used. By summary, Section 1 assesses the property using a property evaluation administrator's assessment. Section 2 elevates the tax at the compensating tax rate, which is 0.185, $0.185 for each $100 of value thereof. Have assessed pursuant to the provisions. Section 2 being that the lower tax rate on personal property at the rate of $0.173 for each $100 value of value thereof so assessed. Section 3 provides for the collection process. Section 4 provides that the city has a lien on the property for the payment of taxes. Section 5 provides that taxes so collected shall be deposited in the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Wickman. This being the first reading, no action needs to be taken. The second reading, action is be required. If you have any questions or concern, certainly get ahold of Brian or ourselves and we can walk you through the as well. But thank you, Mr. Wickman. I do also have an ordinance 2025-09-07, which is amending the alcohol beverage sales. We have two options, change the highlights on page three and discussions. I guess really, you want, go ahead and show them the.
So when we went through that process, we, Blenda went back and watched the meeting to make sure she could try to figure out what we were wanting to accomplish. And from what I read, we wanted to stop alcohol sales in Thornton, Shell, whatever that's, outside of a bar, and stop it at 12 o'clock is what was kind of mentioned. Now.
I don't know where you heard that from.
So that was what Dr. Spilly had suggested. He said stopping it at midnight. And then there was a discussion where Mr. Shriver said, I don't want to hurt any of the current businesses. And Dr. Spilly said, I'm not, you, you specifically mentioned the Edgewood Tavern. And he said, I'm not talking about the tavern. I'm talking about the package sales. And then nobody said anything. And it was like, were you agreeing with the midnight that Dr. Spilly proposed? Or did you want to keep the package sales at 2:30, which is?
And I would like to go a little step further. That originally, when this ordinance was proposed, it was eight to whatever it was on Sunday for drinks and for packaged liquor. And I'd like to see it stay that way. Because you know where you can go to get a mixed drink at 6 o'clock in the morning? Crestview Hills. Yeah. So I mean, so we're going to hurt our businesses by putting these ordinances out there that are just going to hurt them. You know, what if Edgewood Tavern says, hey, we want to have a pregame party or a tailgate. Everybody come at 9 o'clock and we can start drinking and then we'll get in a bus and we'll go down to the Bengals game. I mean, what's, you know, why shouldn't they be allowed to do that?
So to back it up, this came about for Kroger, because Kroger's moving from Erlanger to Edgewood, correct?
Yeah, and all that Kroger asked is if we would move it from 11 a.m. on Sunday to 8 a.m. on Sunday.
That's how.
For package.
For packaged liquor.
For, yes. And I think the, the ordinance that changes it to midnight is only for packaged liquor. It didn't impact the, like the Edgewood Tavern or any one else.
All those places that sell beer.
And that's what we, we went around and checked. I mean, they sell till 2:30. The second ordinance is only changing it to 8 a.m. on Sunday. So we, we made sure that we had two because we thought there was confusion to it at the meeting. So we make sure we had two. So if you're in favor of keeping it the way it is, except changing it to 8 a.m., I believe that was the second ordinance, right?
That's correct.
That's correct. And that would be the one to say you would like to have a first reading to.
But we didn't change by the drink. That would still stay at 11 on Sunday unless you wanted to change that as well.
I would like to see it just change. I mean, that way, somebody who wants to open a restaurant might be encouraged to, to come to Edgewood. Say, hey, you know, I can serve mimosas and brunch. I mean, why, I don't know why we have to try to invent the wheel every time. Let's just change it to what it should be. You can just go to Crestview Hills. You can go to Town Center and get a drink.
I asked that Blenda were talking today and I was like, I don't understand why we just only get 6:30 to 2:30 and be done with it for everybody on every.
I think then it came to like, why don't we just do 24 hours rather than just missing three hours out of every day?
Sometimes I think that too, right?
Right.
You know?
Because I know you can get a tee time at Summer Hills Country Club, 7 a.m. on Sunday morning. And you know they're selling you a beer if you want a beer.
And they do.
But now Edgewood, we're going to say you can't get one.
So we don't have. George, you figure all that out?
He wants to drink a beer at 8 o'clock on Sunday.
Right, that's me. I don't drink at 4:00. He's not drinking one on any day at any hour, I don't think, but are you wanting us to then change that the Edgewood Taverns that sell by the drink open at 8 o'clock on Sunday?
Or any other business that sells by the drink.
So you want to go to?
I would just like to see it 8 o'clock for both.
Okay.
8 o'clock to 2:30 a.m.
By the drink and package.
So 31B would just, the only thing I would change on 31B, as I'm looking at the ordinances that you guys proposed, would be Section 2.0A is by the drink. And that would change to before 8 a.m., not before 11 a.m. That would be the only modification to.
The only modification to it.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, and on Sunday is when the 11 is.
No, I'm fine with that. I think that makes sense.
Can you make that change and have a reading of it or do I have to fix it in the paperwork?
No, all we need to do is change it, handwrite it.
Buy packages are timed after 2:30 a.m. and before 6 a.m. on every day except Sunday, when such sales are prohibited during the period of 2:30 a.m. and before 8 a.m. That one is good. And then there should be another one that does package rate or buy the drink rate. This one. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, should be.
Yeah, it's not by the drink. That's by the sip.
Buy the drink at 11. And we're just going to change that verbiage right there to be eight. So it'll read, buy the drink during the period of time after 2:30 a.m. and before 6 a.m. And not sell, so after 2:30 and before 6 a.m. on every day except Sunday, when such sales are prohibited during the period of time after 2:30 a.m. and before 8 a.m. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
So basically, they're split out, but they're exactly the same now. So you can change, right?
Yeah, they are.
We've differentiated between drink and package, but we've now made them the same.
Correct.
And then there's the weekday and then there's the.
Right, but I mean, the times are all 6 a.m. to 2:30, except Sunday, 8 to 2:30 across the board.
Is this going to be, are we going to be able to get coverage?
So it won't matter.
It's covered, doesn't matter because they're.
They don't sell by the drink. Yeah.
And they also buy the drink.
Open consumers.
And they close before 2:30 a.m. So they're.
Hey, you just tell me which one to read.
31B with the, B's in boy.
Do you have any attachment A's? I wonder if they're the same.
No, they were different. One added and then ended on the package and one ended at 2:30.
Okay.
Mr. Wickman, would you please read ordinance 2025-09-07, amending alcohol beverage sales, please?
It's an ordinance of the City of Edgewood, Kent County, Kentucky, amending the provisions of ordinance 1992 hyphen 18 of the city that's previously amended from time to time and now codified as Section 112.10 of the Edgewood Code of Ordinances to revise the hours when the retail sale of alcoholic beverages are prohibited in the city. And the amendment provides that the sale of alcoholic beverages by the drink is prohibited after 2:30 a.m. and before 6 a.m. on every day except Sunday, when such sales are prohibited during the period of time after 2:30 a.m. and before 8 a.m. By the package, it's the same. By the package during the period of time after 2:30 a.m. and before 6 a.m. on every day except Sunday, when such sales are prohibited during the period of time after 2:30 a.m. and before 8 a.m.
That's it?
So basically, we don't need these subparabasis at all.
That's what I was saying, but now it's broken up.
We have it in case somebody wants to change it later.
Okay.
You okay with the.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Packaging, specified. It's the same. So you get what, five and a half hours to dry out before you can go get your drink?
Well, maybe it'll stop someone from driving to Edgewood to get something. Well, maybe it'll stop someone from driving to Edgewood to get something impaired.
There will be a second reading there?
I'm sorry?
There will be a second reading. There will be a second reading.
Yes.
All right, through. Again, this being the first reading, no action needs to be taken, but if you have additional discussions on it, we'll have it before the second reading for approval. We do have some up and coming events to come. Everybody got a little green little discs today. We've got Touch a Truck, which is October the fourth, and that's going to be at Freedom Park. Public Works Police Department will be there. Everybody will be, the whole of the city will be there on October the fourth, and that's from noon until two, and that's for the residents to come and introduce themselves, as well as introduce ourselves to them and see the equipment that we have. And we will be handing out the little discs that you have. That's from Public Works, isn't it, Rick? Rick decided to go out and get a little frisbee, so kid's got something to throw, so we'll be handing those out to the everyone down there on October the fourth. Spooky Sunday is coming up as well, and that's October the nineteenth. That's four PM at President's Park. And we'd like everybody to join, and we're at St. Pius at three forty-five, as we had before. Walk over with the costumes and so forth to the to the basketball area, so we can kick it off at four o'clock at the, and then the costume judging, and then, of course, the walk through the park. And then the fall chair yoga starts on October the twenty-second, and that's at eleven AM in the morning at Liberty Hall. This event is free, but they want to have it pre-registered so they can kind of get everybody acclimated, find out how many people are coming. But that's the yoga, and it's a chair yoga, and I think we had a number, full crowd last year, so hopefully have it again. That starts on the twenty-second of October. Can they come in? Hope to see you all on Friday, seven thirty in the morning for ribbon cutting, and what a great thing it will be for all of us as 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 a community. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Joe?
Second.
Second by Jimmy. Jeremy? Good night. Thank you very much. Bridget, thank you very much, Bridget.